Let me see the T-shirt. What does it say? OK CPS Champions.
Okay, that's right. Is there day of giving? Is that what it is?
It is tee up for OK CPS.
But it's a fundraiser.
fundraiser.
Right, okay.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. This is the Court Services Advisory Board for Thursday, May 9, 2024 at 1:30. We'll start with roll call.
Sheriff Brian Lund, Rick Boyne, Jim Stoner.
Kent Rick.
Jim Anderson for Tommy Johnson III.
Mitch Breiman.
Vicki Behama.
And Bridget Biffle. And so we do have a quorum since everyone is here. Notice of the meeting was properly posted on May 8, 2024. Looks like our first order of business is for discussion and possible action regarding the minutes from March 21, 2024. I'll take a motion for approval of the March 21 minutes.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then moving on, discussion and possible action regarding the Oklahoma County Court Services Bureau monthly statistics reports.
Good afternoon. How's everybody? So like usual, we'll go over each month, we'll hit some high spots, and you can ask any questions if you have any. So for March, looks like for without conditions, so your ORs 38 were qualified, 34 were approved, supervised 290, and then with conditions or conditional bond, 56 were presented with 27 approved, 191 supervised, total 61 for the month. We have to answer any questions on that month. If you have any. And then we can go to April, same thing, without conditions, let's see, 49 were qualified, 39 approved, 295 supervised, with conditions or conditional bond, 66 were presented with 23 approved, and 187 supervised, so 62 total. And that is March and April.
And do we have, I think I asked last time, do we have any numbers on how many were returned to custody or how many?
I could get that to you within minutes if you want me to. Not right now, but I can certainly send that to you.
I'd be curious as well, just make sure how we're doing on getting by people.
Yeah, typically, I think I went through, I went through 2023, percentage wise of everybody that's supervised monthly, of those, the combination of failed to appear and picked up new charges or returned to custody for violations was, I think, like 6%. But I'll confirm that, and I can send that to you certainly. I think I might have sent that to you.
You did.
Was that, was that sounding up right?
You did, yes, from the email that you sent.
Okay, perfect.
And was the 6% do we know was that for a certain month or overall?
Throughout the year, yeah.
I'm just kind of curious, that sounds like a pretty good deal. Do you know how that might compare to other jurisdictions?
I don't, but that would be something I'd certainly be willing to call around and check with.
Does anybody have any other questions regarding your report?
Move approval of the report as presented.
Second.
Can you call in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then discussion and possible action regarding Oklahoma County Court Services judicial statistics reports.
All right, so here's March. These are just essentially the same numbers you just saw on the previous list. So of the 56 delivered to judges, 27 were approved, so 29 releases were denied for the month of March. And then April 22nd, we had 66, now remember, this is just conditional bond, this does not include OR also, so these are just conditional bond, 66 central judges with only 23 approved, so 43 were denied release for the month of April.
Do we know on the main reason on this denied category? Do we have any record of why?
No, we've talked about this a bunch on our Judge Stoner, he can certainly help on that. A lot of times it boils down to criminal history and failures to appear.
Can we have a motion to approve or accept the reports?
Tell me.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then next on the list is discussion and possible action regarding the potential implementation of an evidence-based risk assessment tool as recommended by the Crime and Justice Institute.
So that, we had a committee ready, and some meetings set to do that, and it was agreed to go ahead and postpone that until obviously today's meeting, so some other meetings are completed. So that's in essence, I'll hold for right now.
Okay, and I know we had talked about it the last meeting, convening a committee and everything, and I think that's been done, just the actual meeting was postponed. So I would move that we table that to a later date.
As a meeting already scheduled?
It has, it is not. I think it was just Judge Hawn been moved in definitely until we have our next meeting, and so.
You want to defer that to the next?
Yes, if we could, I would move to defer that until the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then next we have the discussion and possible action regarding the mandatory exclusionary crimes list and to consider any amendments to expand eligibility for pretrial release as recommended by the Crime and Justice Institute.
Unless you all feel otherwise, this was discussed at the last meeting, it kind of, I think, died for lack of any further discussion, so you can certainly have more discussion or just same thing, and remove it from here on out. But that would be up to the board on this.
Remove from further discussion, is that what you're saying, or remove?
Well, whatever this board's pledge. We did discuss it last time, and it died for lack of any motion, or from what I remember.
Right, I think most of the crimes on there were violent crimes. I think there was a little discussion regarding the methamphetamines, but...
It was agreed to stay as is at this point, from what I remember.
Yeah, there was a discussion about, because it mentioned simple possession, I believe, of methamphetamine.
Possession with intent.
Or with intent, but it excluded the other, you know, common controlled substances that we see on the street.
Oh, you need to dis...
And I, you know, I think it needs to stay, I think it needs to be expanded, I think it should include cocaine base or, you know, any kind of opiate as well. I don't know why we're more worried about meth than we are opiates right now. So I know from, we're certainly taking a lot more people to the hospital and people to the morgue of opiates than we are methamphetamine right now.
So do we want to just remove the discussion about expanding it at this time?
We pretty much 100% agreed that it all used to stay last time, last meeting.
Stay as is.
Stay as is.
Yes, stay as is.
But do you need, do we need to have something changed on it, or?
No, what I'm saying is we add, we add cocaine and...
So we do need to have some changes?
Our stance would be that it needs to include those two, not just methamphetamine, but also include cocaine and opiates.
And you'd say these are people that would not be eligible for the conditional bond?
Yes. I mean, if we're not going to make, I mean, yeah, I don't see a difference.
Yeah, I just say, I guess it depends on what the plan is with the way to get out. I mean, obviously, the jail, it's just possession or you're talking about with...
Well, I can't remember the way it was worded in there, but there was something specific on this list that had to do with methamphetamine.
Number 17.
Yes, number 17 includes methamphetamine.
Distribution possession with a 10.
Yes, but possession, simple possession charges are still eligible.
My recommendation would be CDS, or list the big three, methamphetamine, opiate base, or cocaine base, and cocaine base.
And my only concern is these aren't people who the judges sign off on, these are just people who the judges are allowed to look at. So obviously, people with large amounts of cocaine or those things, I mean, most judges, we kind of looked at the numbers, it looks like a large portion of them aren't signed off on anyway. So I like that we still screen them or look at them, and of course, leave the ultimate authority up to the district attorney's office or attorneys and judges. I'm just cautious to expand anything because cases where it's small amounts, I would still want those individuals to be reviewed.
And let me just say this, I mean, we have a new process now in the DA's office because we have two people that are attending every initial appearance and providing information to Judge McCray about whether that person should be on a bond, OR, conditional, whatever, or whether we're going to object to it. And so a lot of the decisions are made not really just based on the charges that they're currently charged with, but on the person's criminal history, which is the appropriate way to look at it, because that speaks to dangerousness. So, I mean, I would suggest until we know exactly for sure what's going on with regard to pretrial release and how, who's going to be doing supervision of that, maybe we just leave it as is, as was the decision, and then we can have a more informed discussion because I can provide more information about what the DA's office, the PB's office, and Judge McCray is doing right now to make sure that people who are dangerous or who are flight risk, failure to appear, aren't released from the jail.
As a layman, that doesn't speak of simple possession. That says possession with intent to distribute, doesn't speak of just simple possession.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
I would agree. I would think somebody who's pushing to end the life of our community shouldn't be on pretrial release.
And I don't think those people are getting pretrial release regardless.
I don't know.
Right.
I mean, we just had this weird artificial bar for a drug because it was the scary drug back in 2008 when we made this list. I mean, again, it's just an outlier on the prescribed list such that low use people charged with specifically methamphetamine sit in the county jail, whereas people charged with other crimes don't. And again, it was a reflection of 15 years ago, and I, I mean, I know that I'm kind of the lone voice in my quarter, but it seems to me to be an outlier on the list such that it should be removed. Again, we have all kinds of screenings to keep people from getting out into the community if they're dangerous, but we just have this class of people that are being held in the county jail because of the fears of might have drug that are 15 years old. And again, as a private lawyer, it doesn't have any impact on me, my client's been logged. What it leaves is indigent people in jail for the public defender's office, and it just seems, again, it seems like something that doesn't fare with the rest of the list.
Under simple possession, I totally agree with you, possession with intent to distribute, that means they're selling drugs to make a living.
Well, it means they're sharing drugs. Simple possession is a misdemeanor, but there are all different levels of possession with intent, ranging from telling someone to buy drugs to selling less than 30 grams of methamphetamine. And again, I think the people who are actively distributing medium or large amounts of drugs are either making bond because they have money, or certainly not getting out on conditional bond.
Because there are cases, I think I brought that up last time, where someone has just a gram, but it's in several baggies or something, and so that person technically could be charged with possession with intent to distribute, even though it's a tiny amount, and they're not a drug dealer because they bought it or had a package that way, they're technically right now excluded from even being looked at. But I do think that judges, the people with high amounts of drugs or the people who have proceeds on them at the same time, I do think judges don't sign off on that, or anyone who has drugs and a gun. But I do wish that the people with the tiny amounts of drugs, but in two bags or something, can get charged with possession with intent, I would like for, I mean, it would be nice for those to be able to be looked at. That doesn't mean that a judge would sign off on it, but they could at least be screened.
You're trying to find a distinction of the professional versus the user.
Yes.
And that's to your point, this professional would be, might not be a good criteria.
I have a question to you, the district attorney, to talk to Simon between the two of those.
I shouldn't agree with you, attorney, with this.
It's strange that it specifically lists methamphetamine and not the other two big problems. I would think either all or nothing would be appropriate. But if they're not, but if it's a moot point and the judges aren't granting it, you know, I don't know that we'd probably spin around.
So we just want to move on from that discussion now, okay?
So.
And then the next item in the list is discussion and possible action on transferring the operation and management of the duties currently provided by Court Services Office from county to team. And I know that was requested by Judge Stoner.
Yeah, I got kind of, let's say, kind of pulled into a conversation here. The first I learned about this effort was, really got a text message from the conditional bond office about, so it was on the BOCC agenda about this, first time I learned about it. Of course, I've talked to Commissioner Bond about his views about that, he makes some very good points about that, and so I thought it'd be something for this board. I think it brought up in that board, and this board was meant to have that conversation about that, so I asked if we could put that out here for the conversation we had about that.
I would ask that we table it right now. At the last BOCC meeting, I, obviously, it was a pretty heated discussion about Court Services and Team and who was going to handle pretrial supervision and take over the duties, really, of Court Services. And so I volunteered, and I think commissioners approved, Bridget and I, to talk to all the stakeholders and find out exactly what everybody's doing, what the benefits are, what things are that we have to make sure we include. I think there's also a discussion as to whether or not this has to go out to an RFP, I don't think we have that answered yet. But I took the responsibility to find out what each, I interviewed Court Services, I've talked to Team, I've talked to law enforcement, I had that meeting yesterday about what their expectations are and their concerns about switching to Team and not having Court Services do the supervision piece and be in charge of pretrial release. So what I would ask is maybe, and I think we have a meeting at 3 o'clock with the stakeholders again, Team's coming, Court Services, or Grant's going to be there, or somebody from Court Services, law enforcement's going to be there, Bridget and I. And I thought we would all have a smaller discussion because it's easier sometimes to ferret out exactly what's needed and what the issues are. And then if we could be allowed to present it after we've had that discussion and have some points before we go to the BOCC, I would prefer to handle it.
I would definitely support that. I think really what we need is to open up this conversation, and so that we're all having the dialogue, weighing pros and cons. I don't, I wouldn't think we'd actually be taking action on this today because I think there's a lot of unknowns in my mind about how this could work and make sure they have capacity for that, and the pros and cons, and even though, some of us are in budgeting is concerned. I have had some conversations over the years with Grant about kind of the things I thought our pretrial services office ought to be doing, and sometimes we could find an agreement there, and sometimes we can't. So I'm open-minded to this idea of ultimately, I think our guideline has to be whatever's best for accounting, but I don't disagree that more information would help with that.
Right, and just so that you're clear, I think I had a discussion with the presiding judge, and, because I thought maybe some of the judiciary should be involved in this conversation, obviously.
For sure, yeah.
And he asked me to go, he would prefer to go in and put some conditions and thoughts together, pros and cons, and then to present it to the judiciary even before the Board of County Commissioners votes on it. So my point is, is it's going to come to you for your review and input, not you personally, but the judiciary, for you to comment and have your input on whether or not we're going to stay with Court Services or go to Team. And I forgot to mention that, Judge.
Move with table six.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? And do we want to, I had a question about that, are we tabling that till the next meeting, or is there a need? I know there was this talk of, because the fiscal year's coming up and when that would happen, do we know when the next meeting would be, or do we need to meet, recess and meet before then, or?
We might need to call, I don't know how often we're meeting, we're meeting once, once a month.
Every month, every...
Every, okay, so we might need to call an emergency meeting to discuss it. Can we do something like that?
Special.
A special, that's what I meant, yes.
In June, that's...
To discuss it. Well, I promised the commissioners that I would give them their recommendations before the end of the month, just because there's a lot of people that are affected by this decision, and I don't think we wanted to wait to the last minute. So we're on course, like I said, I've talked to the majority of the stakeholders, we're going to have a meeting at 3 o'clock, assuming we make that.
I would like to be a participant, I do have this, we have the National Drug Court Conference coming up, and so...
When is that, Judge?
That was the week of, it'd be the 21st through the 24th, and so the weekend, Thursday the 30th, if we like keeping this Thursday afternoons, Thursday the 30th, that would be my request, I guess we can float that around after we do hear, but that...
And what about next week?
16th, yep. We can do that. We think we have it done.
I think so, yeah, I think so, because what is...
I think there might be a CJF meeting that afternoon.
Oh, we can skip those.
Would that be 3 o'clock?
Sure.
We could still, we could still have a 1:30 meeting here.
We have a, one of our common deputies is being placed on the memorial wall, and we will be in DC.
On the 16th?
Yes.
All week? Well, maybe what I can do is send you the recommendations, because I have to put them in written form anyway for the judges.
We just have to have a quorum. We definitely want input from the sheriff, but I guess we're, maybe we could send a proxy, or just, boy, best your opinion as long as we have the quorum for the meeting, right? And I could do this at 10.
Yeah. Okay, and so we're going to table that and then have a discussion then?
Yes.
And then is there any citizen participation? It looks like we have one, Carol Knight.
Here in the afternoon. So I'm listening to all the comments about the judge's story, and the difference between Team and judicial, I'm, well, this is where I'm a bondsman, so I look at all of this. But this moment, I want you to know that more than anything, I'm a victim. On April the 29th, my front door of my business was smashed in by a guy. Folks run around on the streets, smash at my glass door, and he leaves my office, goes over on Fifth Street and attacks a woman on the street, goes a little farther down the road, attacks a lady's windows with rocks, I'm throwing rocks, breaks a window. And then he goes across the street and he kicks in another glass door. By now, the police have been called, he's arrested. Happens every day, right? Except this guy was on a team release, because on the 16th, he attacked another guy over on Reno and Westwood, tried to get a can of red paint in his truck. He was arrested, and he was released to Team a couple of days later. So that was his first chance back, because I already knew the details. My office was his second. The lady attacked was a third, the window was the fourth, the back door was the fifth. But he's arrested, and he goes to jail, and he's released to Team. Now, nowhere did Team bother to put in a report that he was rearrested for the second, third, fourth, fifth crime. But it's not hard to record, they just give him another release to Team. And last night, he was arrested again. Unauthorized use of a motor vehicle, possession of drugs, possession of weapons. This is a guy that lives on the streets, and we've had to deal with him repeatedly. Lives in burned-out buildings, spends his evenings, has bolt guns on us, we know who he is. So when he's been released each and every time, he's not going to Team, he's going back across the street from my property, waiting for the next victim. My question to you today is, these people are standing here telling you about the reports of their firing, the Team does not. Team just runs over and gets people out. When do the victims matter? We're not talking about the victims here. You see, I'm having, today I'm having a $2,000 door replaced, oh, and by the way, the same guy, just about 30 days ago, broke the window again. And a little building up in Hurry, Montana, broke that window out too. He just runs around the street, tearing things up, and then he gets released to Team. I spent $2,000 today for another door. When do the victims matter? And I'm not the only one. I'm just the only one here today saying, it's time that you quit thinking that everybody's got to get out of the jail so quick, we've got to run people down to Team, they're going to save everybody, you're not saving the victims. What about the woman that was attacked on Fifth Street? What about the list of... Do none of these people matter? And yes, I'm a little angry today, usually I'm a little, I'm angry. I'm tired of replacing doors. We got hit by the rioters, we lost $9,000 worth of windows. Did anybody care then? No. Let them all off, they get to pay for windows? We do. We get to pay them. So my point about the difference between Team and conditional is, these folks, even though we're sitting across the street from one another, we do the same thing. They report to the court when people go back into custody, when they commit new crimes, when they don't do what they're supposed to do. Team doesn't, you know why? They don't want you to know. They don't want you to know that that guy that they got a release on that threw paint in a man's brand-new truck, they don't want you to know that he got arrested 10 days later, that he never bothered to come in. They don't want you to know, because then they can't stand here and say, well, we only have 2% failure from the blood rate, we only have 12% failure to the tear rate. Go to arraignments. We do. Each and every day, we have a bondsman arraignments. I'll bring you the stats if you want them. 54% of non-veil releases fail to appear for arraignments. Not my opinion, it's the numbers of what's going on in arraignments. These folks at least will be held accountable. The Team folks, not so much. Don't give Team judicial, don't do it, because the victims don't matter over there, they do not. It's all about, let's get these people out of jail. It doesn't matter what they do, what they've done, and there are a lot of people that are tired of it, but I appreciate your time.
Is there any more citizen participation? Are there any board comments? Is there any new business?
Please, Jerry.
Is there a second? All in favor?
I'm sorry, let me...
Slow down.
That's very bothersome. Obviously, that's the one side of the story, so, and I understand the way that our agenda is, if there were someone, I don't even know if it's anybody here from Team or not, but if there were, we still could not ask them at this point to respond, if I understand correctly. But at some point, I'd sure like to hear from Team.
That's the information that I'm gathering at all.
Okay.
I think, Carol, I really do regret what's happened here. I, you know, I don't even know what to say, except I think your comments do deserve some kind of acknowledgement here. You know, in my view, these are the kinds of people that we should try to figure out what that criteria is, and whether or not they really should be out or not, and how they should be monitored more closely for their behavior. And so I want to, I mean, I do agree with you, these are, these are the people that keep getting out, keep, this is complicated, because you know, some of them get out, they do what they're supposed to do, and some get out and they don't, and sometimes, you know, trying to manage human behavior is very difficult, especially when you have addiction and mental health, issues are mixed in with that, and they're supposed to be trying to provide some of those services, addiction, mental health, and so, you know, my sense is, you know, for every 100 success stories, you'll have one or two that are not, it's just very difficult to parse that out, but it doesn't let us off the hook in terms of thinking we've got to keep working on that criteria. What is that criteria within getting out, and also, once they're out, what is that criteria for treatment, oversight, supervision? And so this is complicated stuff, but I do agree that we've got to, we've got to get better. I mean, I know people get out, I don't mind if people do get out on, over here, conditional bond, they do commit offenses, it's just, I mean, I have people in drug courts that we get them out and they commit offenses, that's just, you know, it's just a level of always adjusting our criteria for how we evaluate them, always try to supervise them more closely, and hopefully we get closer and closer to fewer incidents like that. I don't know whether we get rid of them completely, because humans are tricky creatures, and there's two sides to this, but I just wanted to acknowledge what you're saying, I do hear what you're saying.
I appreciate that. And I'm not the only one, because there, team is really getting releases from people on aggravated trafficking, and they're, they're taking them and dropping them off to rehabs, and the people stay twenty-four hours until they get a ride and they're leaving. They're not reporting that to the court, is the problem.
I will say under the statute on aggravated trafficking, only DSC can supervise them, and it is mandatory GPS.
Yeah.
So team isn't even allowed to supervise.
Well, I'm saying though, at some point with team, this is not something team's doing on their own. They actually have to have some kind of judge sign off on this. So there is, there is a set of judicial eyes on it. But it sounds like your, your complaint, part of it is, is who's getting out. The other part of your complaint is, once they're over there and not being supervised close enough, and then also if they are messing up, they're not, there's, where's the paper trail letting people know what's going on? I don't know the answer. There may be more to the story here.
I can tell you, they're providing reports. It was one of the first conversations I had with team, is that if they're ever gonna be considered for being involved in pretrial release, they have to report every violation, even if it's a European hot violation, you know, which may or may not be a revocable issue. But I think there was a breakdown, quite honestly, in the paper flow from team, who was providing violation reports and putting them in a basket at the court clerk's office, to getting to our office timely. And so I fixed that. We're addressing that. I don't, I'm not gonna say I fixed it. We're trying to make that work better. So we've set up an email account to where they have to email us, and it goes to an email box specifically for team, so that they let us know when violation reports come in. Alan and Angela are reviewing all of the lower level offenses. If it's something that deserves court's attention, then it's going to be ADA assigned to that case. But I, I think a part of the problem there was a misconception, and maybe they weren't filing them, maybe they're filing them now. I don't know the answer to that. But there was a process issue within my office of us getting the reports. Us, I'm talking about the assigned ADA.
This is the last few days. Instead of filing a, a report that the person was rearrested, in the case of a bondsman, I would go over and surrender the bond. In the case of conditional, they would go over and make a surrender. And then you can reevaluate the situation. The guy is back in jail. Why are we just running down there to get another release done without notifying the court? I don't know if Judge Traum knew that she signed a second release, that she'd just signed one a few weeks ago. And now he's back in jail on the third, on the third occasion, there's nothing filed in, those releases are filed in. There's no, there's no report that says this guy was rearrested on, on somebody else.
And I think we've been working on that. I think the releases or the reports have been going to the district attorney's office. They've been going to the judges. There's a question about some of them contain private health information or treatment information. And so having those filed with the court clerk, we were gonna see if we could do some of those things under seal, because there was an issue. If everything gets filed, then some protected information could be leaked. So I think we're kinda all working on that process. But the public defender's office, the district attorney's office, has been working on better screening mechanisms when there are victims in crimes, when there are victims of crimes, people being contacted and looking at, I think, everybody's idea of a lot of these programs is to get the, you know, low level nonviolent offenders or people with mental health issues or homeless people off the streets with those, the ones that are sitting in jail on a five hundred dollar bond, a thousand dollar bond, they would never be able to afford. So it's a lot of individuals that wouldn't even be able to go through bondsman anyway. So I think that was the original idea for the programs, is all these individuals who can't afford a bond, and being able to get out. And a lot of those are victimless crimes or CDS, and getting those people into treatment. So I think the offices have been working together to have better screening, have better reports. And I think court services, if there was a merger, a takeover, I think Ms. Patina said before, court services, we would keep that portion that does the background screening, because team doesn't have a law enforcement portion that does background screening and has the same access as law enforcement. And so that's something that we would wanna ensure every individual has had their background running. So I think that would help the process and make it better.
Plus, this board is not gonna go away. So they'd still be coming here and present, just as has been the case. And they would have to, by contract, on what you covered, have to do all these requirements, or they'd be in breach of contract.
Well, that's what we're working on. That's exactly right. Those conditions, if, if that's what the board decides to do, that's wrong.
And I, I will add, I might as well jump in with everybody else. But no, you're right, Justice. There's no way you can predict behavior. You can't predict criminal behavior. If I could predict criminal behavior, I would be, you know, somewhere else, right? But at the same time, there's things you can do to mitigate that from happening, right? Which is, in essence, what we've done since our existence, right? You provide background information, right? We, we follow the law. The law says specifically, you have to provide NCIC background information to the courts in a report.
Well, what we do is we provide, we, we follow evidence-based practices, risk assessment. That's what I've been, that's what I've been demanding from the day I took, I started over here, is we need to use evidence-based tools to understand who we're getting out. I'm not, I don't know what, I don't know what team uses. I don't know, however else it is. I know that what we're using at the county is not an evidence-based risk assessment tool.
No, I agree with that a hundred percent. That's why we had discussions about an evidence-based risk assessment tool several years ago. And I've had that on here multiple times. I had presentations come in, and then we even had the PSA, and it was voted down each time.
Well, it's been voted down because you didn't want it. No, it would be extra work on you. And also, I know you went to Mr. Roberts, well, if we do this, we might have more people in jail. And so, of course, he throws a fit about it. And so that's why it gets voted down, because he's one of the loudest voices in the room.
Yeah. No, it's actually less, it's actually less work on us. The PSA that I brought up is actually less work. But what I was talking about is, is statute specifically is, is the NCIC check. And, and when someone does violate, we violate right away, not because we want someone to go back into custody, because if we can hurry, hurry up and violate somebody right away, when you do something wrong, that gives the judge, the district attorney, the private attorney, an opportunity to get together and discuss and say, hey, what's the best thing for this person? You know, so that's why we wanna do that right away, so we can get them whatever services are necessary. So again, you can't predict criminal behavior, but there's certainly things you can do along the way to mitigate that, which is obviously what we've done since day one. And just to finish to your point about an evidence-based tool, I'm a hundred percent been in on it. I've talked to Rabbits about it, when we, back then, about doing it. I'm the one who brought in Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. Again, everybody else remembers that, to come in and give a presentation to at the ORAS. So I've, I've been pushing for that, and now I've pushed for the PSA. So hopefully it gets passed, and it's something I've been trying to do for several years. Not trying to shoot it down. That's, that's for service.
I have no further questions.
What over here, your motion to adjourn?
I still have a motion to adjourn on the floor.
All in favor?
We did already.
Okay, perfect. Okay, and they're all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
If it, for some reason pops up the list, just hit the back button, and it should pull up the agenda. Hit the back button.
Clear? Here it is.
Judge Stone, are you good?
Hit the back button.
We got everything else that mental health court.
The transfer mission is on these agendas also.
Yes.
So this is also why I was.
I know, I was ready.
No, I just didn't.
Yes, the one, yeah.
She's got the good touch.
My mental health.
And then we are moving on to the mental health board, regular meetings, Thursday, May ninth. And I will note that Kent Bridge is listed as a member for that board, but he is a member of the court services board and was accidentally listed on these others, correct? And so we will strike that off.
Yeah, my understanding is that I've temper up and promoted it to all the boards. Y'all have great day.
Okay, and so I will call this meeting to order. Uh, Lou, roll call first.
Mr. Martin, you start.
Right, one.
Judge Stone.
Jim Anderson.
Tommy Johnson.
Mitch Freeman.
Vicki Bahama.
And Bridgette Little. And so we do have a quorum. Notice of this meeting was properly posted on May eighth, two thousand twenty-four. First, we will go to discussion on possible action to approve the minutes of March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. I'll take a motion for approval.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And then we will move on to discussion on possible action regarding the report on current AWOL participants by agenda.
So as of February two thousand eight, we have a hundred and six participants currently AWOL. Since two thousand nineteen until now, we have eighty-one. But we're slowly, I think just this week, we had one get picked up who's been AWOL for three years. Prior to that, we had one who had been AWOL for four. So we're slowly but surely getting more people coming in, turning themselves in, not new charges. So we're trying.
Who will accept their report? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that report will be accepted. And then discussion on possible action regarding the report from mental health court. I did bring those this time. I think drug court is on the top, so I think it's the fourth one down. And that is just a copy of the mental health court budget, shows the total that we have in maintenance and operations. And then the second page is the capital outlay. It's a hundred and fifty dollars on the second page. That's just for copiers, and we're actually going to a different copier company, so we won't really be using that anymore. And then the second page is the mental health court fund, the twelve eighty-four. That shows the total of two hundred eighty-seven thousand eight fifty-eight in there. Anybody have any questions about those reports?
Who will they be receiving as presented?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that report will be accepted. And then discussion on possible action regarding contracting to diversion hub for dedicated employees to handle case manager, case management for mental health court. Do we have anyone here? Do we need any discussion on that?
It's been on the agenda now for two years, and it's going well. I'm not sure it needs to stay on the agenda or not.
So there's no action we need to take. I mean, this doesn't have to do with seven eighty-one money.
I think I watched the two thousand twenty-two meeting, and that was on there too. And Mr. Roberts was talking about how, yeah, we have case management, everything's going great. So I think, should we just take that item off?
Yeah, no objection to that.
Okay, so motion to strike that.
Second.
Permanently.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to post?
We, is there nothing, I think we missed four.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, I discussed three and four at the same time and just didn't read. Four was discussion on possible action regarding the report for mental health court. It was the second of the two pages that we went through. And so I think when Mr. Freeman accepted the first four, did someone wanna make a motion to accept the second?
Oh, who did accept?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And so we will move on to discussion on possible action regarding implementation of cloud-based software and tracking communication that would aid in tracking and communicating with and increasing accountability, and then providing safe and efficient courtroom alternatives to conducting mass mental health court pockets. I think that may also be an item that has been on there for a while.
It has been, and we, we put that on there during the COVID period, where we got the connective software for both drug court, mental health court, veterans treatment court, and also we started using it over in court services, you know, for notifying people court. Right now, we're, we're kind of in the process of reevaluating that technology, make sure that what we're having still meets our needs. There's been some conversations about potentially using a different platform that might help us better. At some point, I don't know that it needs to necessarily be on this board. At some point, I think, I mean, unless, unless that some of this board really wants to, we could provide an update on, but I don't, I don't know. I guess, I guess where I'd be at if, if the mental health court, they need a different software, and they gotta grant them, you know, the technology grant to pay for, does this board wanna say yes or no approval, just be aware of it? I mean, as far as micromanaging those type of decisions, that'd be my question. I don't, to my point, I don't know that it really needs to be on there unless this board really wants it on there. I think they would, they would inform the board of what they're doing, but they're not, how would you say?
Yeah. Because we were talking about this a little bit yesterday, weren't we?
Correct. Yeah, this one's been on here for quite a while. And I think that it started at the COVID period of actually bringing it on there. And right now, the utilization varies by court program, but we're in a reevaluation phase, seeing what is the actual cost of what we're spending on this utilization, and the effectiveness to actually improve our participants' life and their, further their education. And so we're looking at a situation of that. If we want to report out kind of where that's at, then we can definitely provide that each month. But I think right now, we're in the exploration phase, kind of like what Vicki is with the previous stuff that we talked about. So I don't know that there's, there's no, there's not a lot of information to give. So this could possibly be stricken and then reintroduced whenever we have more information to actually share versus just having to strike it every single time, or just say that, hey, we're accepting it.
So you're saying if we, if we wanna make a change on that, if we're making a pivot, that we would put it back on the docket here?
Correct.
So I did booth, we permanently strike number six.
Second.
Until such time, we might put it back on there.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then discussion on possible action regarding the use of necessary office space for drug court, mental health court, and veterans treatment court.
Table it as well. Right, right now, I guess everything is a stable point unless I'm, we're all kind of spread out. You'd have to vacate the investors' capital building. I guess everybody's up there. So right now, it's a very tight office space. But I don't know that we have, is there anything working to create an alternative to that? Or is it working well right now? I mean, everybody's basically what, in a room this size?
Maybe a wall or all their.
We got all of our programs shared in one room up there at the diversion hub, and we lost our, our offices over there at the, the investors' capital building. And so I guess it's barely functional where it is right now, but I don't know if there's, what alternatives are being explored.
Megan Taylor is working on some other temporary space for us. She has built all of the coordinators into that plan for their MAPS for permanent location. But we will be in temporary space until then. I don't know, again, if it needs to keep being on the agenda.
How did you lose your space over in investors' capital?
We threw it out. Everybody got totally leave, completely gone, DA.
I wanna work you get that back up.
This, along this line, I mean, there, there was a conversation I had last, you know, last year around, ultimately, I mean, my long-term goal is, is to end up building a treatment court campus adjacent to diversion hub. This is really probably something on a much longer time scale. You know, we've had some preliminary discussions around whether presiding judge or county commissioners. Generally, I endorse the idea, but say, good luck, you can pay for it, you know, we can get behind it. There's, you know, we're only a gajillion dollars short on building a jail. This would be kind of down there. So, well, you know, it'd be like, it'd sound like a great idea. There's, where, where would the money come from? Absent an answer for that, you know, it, we had to figure that part out. But so that- But so that, just so this board's aware, that, that's my long-term aspiration. That'd be an ideal if, if we all want to have. Folk on the county really wants to be, uh, you know, have, we'll say, very modern or maybe even looked at as being a ver, a, a model on how things should work. Uh, that should be an aspiration point for all of us, if these things matter, like we, we hope that they do. I think they really do have a huge impact, short-term and long-term, on our community. So, uh, if they're done well, if they're executed well, if they're planned well, if we execute on them, um, you know, that, that we, we could end up being a model. We could end up being one of those places where we, we were last on the list and we were first on the list, and we had people coming in from around the nation to see how we went from first to last with the, with the treatment court campus. Um, but, but for right now, as far as item one hundred and seven, I think right now things are at a stable spot and nothing to report.
So we want to just table that one, or do we need to strike that one?
I guess strike it.
Strike it?
Strike it, you know.
Okay, and there was a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then our last item is discussion and possible action on transferring the operation and management of the duties currently provided by court services from county to team. And I think that was only supposed to be on the court services.
It could be on all of them, because it's really what, um, really, I think what the county commissioners are interested in is what is the position of all these boards? So court services, they would want the opinion, well, what does drug court think about that? What has mental health court think about that? We are, we partner with them quite a bit, so that was my understanding is, is that the commissioners were interested in having a formal opinion from all these boards. And so, so that, but I think we would table.
Motion that we table it, so they can go ahead and do the report.
Okay.
And get more.
Perfect. So motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then do we have any citizen participation? Any board comments? Is there any new business? Hey, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That's your favorite motion, isn't it?
And your chairman, who served on eighteen boards.
Okay, drug court next?
Yes, drug court's next. So the drug court regular meeting, Thursday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I'll call that to order. Roll call.
Brian Martin, Rick Warren.
Judge Donner.
Jim Anderson for county council.
Which Freeman?
Thank you, Ben Henneth.
And Bridget Biffle. And discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then first, uh, discussion and possible action regarding the drug court statistical report.
Good afternoon, everyone. Here's the statistical report for drug and DUI court. This is from beginning of the year two thousand twenty-four up until May eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, as of right now, we've got three hundred and thirty active participants in drug court. Uh, we have eighty-one active participants in DUI court. As a reminder, we split these two programs up last year, uh, based on, uh, evidence, scientific evidence and research that says that if you can find these two populations, that, uh, the higher-risk population has a chance of bringing the lower-risk population to their level. Uh, they also get better treatment this way because they are two different types of people. DUI court participants tend to be higher-functioning adults, while drug court participants tend to not have, uh, jobs or transportation, a lot of resources like that.
Yeah, that's right. Since four hundred and eleven, I know that, I guess that we got this report from Department of Health yesterday. They said we had four, four hundred and thirty-three was the report I got from Michelle just a couple of days ago. So this may be data from a couple of weeks ago, perhaps?
Yeah, my, my CTE stats are always off compared to the DC web stats. I don't think that they're accounting for, um, six-month DOC, first step, and some of the AWOLs as well.
Okay, so we actually would have more than that, but we're not counting them active because they're, while they're still in the program, because they're at different locations. Is that fair to say? So we have, we have four hundred and eleven, but we probably probably have closer to four hundred and thirty, but they're not, they're serving, they're inpatient or they're serving a sanction of some kind.
Yeah, and if you go down, Judge, uh, to the inactive list, and this is based solely on funding. Active, this means that, uh, they're in the program, we're getting funding for them. If they tend to be at a six-month DOC sanction, first step, which is our therapeutic work camp, um, uh, if they're AWOL, they're inactive, and we're not receiving funding for the participants. So if everybody came back, we would have well over five hundred participants in this program.
Yeah.
Hey, tell me again what you do when someone is AWOL. Who do you notify? Uh, is it, so if the sheriff's office were to stop somebody for speeding, uh, how, what do you do with that information?
We've got a great procedure now that, um, Kelly Basie helped set up. Um, we, uh, notify our POs every Friday, anybody that's considered.
Your POs.
Yeah, anybody that's considered AWOL for that week, we notify the POs, yeah, sorry, probation officers, supervision, on Friday. Um, then they send it to a Captain Samuels. Uh, Captain Samuels then, uh, goes and tries to find these participants at the last known location that we've given them.
So they actually do go out and look for them?
They do, yeah, they go track them down. We're getting a lot more people back in custody a lot more quickly over the last several months, so. Uh, used to just do a bench warrant. I guess they kind of run across them now. OCPD is being a little more proactive about going out and, and they're, and they're coordinating, if, what, part of what makes this work is they're coordinating well with the POs. The POs kind of know them a little bit, so the POs can direct police to find them, and so.
The POs are going to kind of know, kind of be able to help too, if we, we want to look.
Yeah, a little bit better.
Uh, we won't talk about that.
Right.
All right, so, so moving on, any other questions on the inactive list? All right, uh, so due please for drug court. Uh, we've had eighty-two since the first of the year. DUI court, we've had twenty-six. Uh, drug court participants at residential facility, we've got eight. Uh, five male, three female, only one in DUI court program. Uh, graduation rate, uh, sixty-nine point.
Excuse me just a minute.
Yes, sir.
On the previous, the residential facility, does a drug court assign drug court people to, it's a different facility for each, right?
It's, it's, I mean, there's a lot of different factors. So why, we're going to try and match them with the most appropriate facility. Say if they're a mother with a single child.
I got you.
Yeah, we're going to try and fit them with a facility that might be able to accommodate that child with them.
Because, so there are several residential facilities.
Yes, sir. We have several state-funded facilities that Department of Mental Health will pay for, usually thirty to sixty days.
Okay, and I, and I feel good about that then, because what I was getting to is, well, your opening comments, it wouldn't help if we had one residential facility where you sent your drug court and your DUI, where you're worried about, A, bringing B down, but if you're sending them all kinds of them, then all right.
Yeah, we probably match with the most appropriate.
Yeah, and the money on that too, of course, we don't have, we don't have to pay for that, fortunately. We just, we got, they got agreement. We get them in there, DMH will pay for it, and so there's probably a dozen or so facilities across the state that, some of them are gender-specific, so like, for males and females, but, yeah, good question though.
Very good. Um, graduation rate, drug court, that'll, uh, since, uh, January first, two thousand twenty-one up until now, we're graduating sixty-nine point four percent. That DUI court's at eighty-eight. And again, that drug court number used to be a little bit higher, but we are truly taking the people that need it the most now. The high-risk, high criminogenic risk, high substance abuse need. Um, so that number's going to go down a little bit, but we're, we are tapping into the population that this community wants. Um, drug court graduates in two thousand twenty-four, uh, we've got thirty-nine DUI court graduates. There's four. Um, revocations, again, but obviously the graduations and revocation carryover from preceding years. Um, we've had thirteen in two thousand twenty-four, only one DUI court revocation. Um, and just kind of in response to some of the criticism earlier on today, and I can totally appreciate that, um, based on some of the, um, citizens in our community, uh, these statistics show, these social markers show, not only are we transforming human beings, but we're strengthening our community as well. Um, our, that CLE, unemployment rate is thirty-eight point three percent. When people graduate this program, it's two point one percent. Um, at CLE, their income is an average of around twelve hundred dollars. When they graduate, it's an average of about twenty-two hundred dollars. Uh, at CLE, twenty-two point eight percent. Have no education, no high school diploma, no ED, no job skills whatsoever. Uh, at graduation, that goes down to four point five percent. Um, and this is a big one. We're stopping the, uh, cycle of trauma. Uh, children that do not live with their parents, um, at CLE is eight point three percent. When they graduate, ninety percent live with their parents. So, thank you.
It's, it's preventative, that's what it is. It's almost, it's all about the prevention case so that people don't enter the criminal justice system.
Yes.
Overall.
Move accept his report. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then discussion and possible action regarding the drug court budget report, that's also in the packet. So all three of those, the first one includes salaries and benefits. The second page is total maintenance and operation. That's office supplies, copiers, things like that. And then the third page, um, is also copier costs. And then the second report, uh, the drug court user fee fund, that's just shows all the bus passes, um, compliance resources.
That's the lab.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. Yes, labs, bus passes, any of those things. There's still three hundred and twenty-one thousand two sixty-six in that account. And then the drug court contribution fund, um, it is at sixteen thousand seven eighty-five. See anybody have any questions about those reports?
No.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then discussion and possible action regarding implementation of cloud-based software system that would aid in tracking, communicating, increasing accountability. Um, is this the same as the other one?
Right.
So motion to strike that.
Strike.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that will be stricken. And then discussion and possible action regarding the use of necessary office space, um, for drug court and mental health.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Wait a minute. Don't you dare. I'm not, I'm not.
Um, was everybody in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then discussion and possible action on transferring operation and management at the duties currently provided by court services office. Uh, motion to table that for now until the others. Okay, all in favor? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Okay, I made the motion.
You didn't.
Uh, and then, do we have any citizen participation? Any board comments? Any new business? I think this is your department's room. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I paused, I gave somebody else a chance.
Uh, veterans treatment court advisory board meeting Thursday, May ninth. Uh, call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Brian Martin, Rick Warren.
Judge Donner.
Judge Donner.
Which Freeman?
Thank you, Ben Henneth.
Bridget Biffle. Notice that this meeting was properly posted on May eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion and possible action regarding the minutes from March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. So motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh, discussion regarding the program status report from coordinator.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, we currently have fifty-three participants plugged into our veterans treatment court. Of those, forty-five are active. Uh, the remainder of those, uh, we have two on six-month DOC sanction, one in federal custody out of state. One is that six-month program at the Jesus House right now, and we have four participants AWOL. Uh, we have graduated two more veterans from our program, which brings our total up to fifty-three, uh, running total. And, uh, we've had three veterans who are unsuccessful in our program over the four-year course of our program. Um, questions?
Can we try to make contact with the AWOL or?
We have the same process in place as drug court does. I, I will say, as far as that process go, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of it. I like, uh, the traction that we're gaining on those.
Move accept his report. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then, uh, discussion and possible action regarding the veterans treatment court budget. It is the one-page report here. Uh, have a couple of deposits and donations. We are at ninety-seven thousand eight fifty-two for that.
I see we got some, uh, donations from Michael Jackson.
Yes, that is the first thing.
I give up.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Okay, is everybody ready to put the report?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then discussion and possible action regarding creating a website and tracking system for all Oklahoma County veteran and diversion veterans.
Move to the table. All right.
Right. Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And then discussion and possible action on transferring the operation and management of duties currently provided by court service, uh, office from county to team. I'll make a motion to table that for now.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then, do we have any citizen participation? Board comments?
Let me comment, there's a question about, um, right now, I guess, we, we were going to get a new grant. The new grant that we have, I guess, sustain the program for, the, the new, the new grant that's funding the program is good for three years?
Four years.
Four years?
So it's nine hundred and fifty thousand, under force of forty-eight months.
Okay.
And how much?
Pardon me?
How much?
Nine hundred and fifty thousand, under force of forty-eight months.
From where?
Federal grant, federal BGA grant. This is our second grant to help run this, this program. Um, which is fantastic, I guess, but, but this board only should aware of is that I don't know that this will always be indefinite funding. It has to be sought out, you know, periodically. And, and I think the BGA's goal is that at some point we become self-sustaining, right? And so I, I know part of that, to me, it's a drop in the bucket, but, uh, these programs have typically had user fees being collected by participants to help offset some of the costs of that. Um, I was considering encouraging with the status of that.
So it is always a great idea to have multiple streams of money, obviously, but I will say, as far as BGA's offerings, we're going to, they're putting out these things. There are always focus areas that are constantly changing as we look at the data and see what's actually important once they get difference. And just from my brief experience here, as long as we're focusing on those areas that they have put out, they seem to be more than willing to help us, uh, meet that mission because we're helping nobody cares.
At this, at this point, four years from now, we don't know.
We don't know, we don't know, absolutely.
And so I was, I was encouraged, Plan A, Plan B, uh, uh, on user fees. I know it's been something that our other programs, we do as a, as a force, you know, I think I did the math on it. There's, I don't know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year that we could be collecting if they were in a different program from the, say, in drug court, for example, we'd be able to collect a user fee. At some point, we were figuring out a system to be able to do that.
Yeah, I, there was strong opposition to that, uh, last time we brought this up, and I believe that's where, where we left it. We haven't had any conversation about it.
Where, I mean, are you, are you for that or against it yourself?
Personally, I'm trying to remove costs from our veterans' lives and not have it. Uh, that's just my general stance towards it. Now, we're talking about, does that mean that that's going to kill off a treatment program that would have provided them services? Then obviously, yes, there's a price to pay, if that's part of the math. But, um, like I said, at this point, that's not what I'm doing.
But so your, but your position would be right now, if they don't have to pay, they're not paid because we get enough money from the government to fund this program, and we're just hoping, so four years from now, we can get another grant to run.
I understand.
Well, no, I'm just asking what your, your, you're just, my, my, my concern is, with these grants, I've been around them a little bit, and I mean, I'm very optimistic to hope this will all come out, but just creating a sustainable program indefinitely. Uh, I mean, we're, we are rolling the dice every four years of whether or not this is going to keep going. And right now, if you only allow, this is the only source of funding that we have for this. Right now, with drug court mental health, we have multiple streams of funding. We've got a lot of community partners to try to help offset some of that, and I just wonder right now, just.
Yeah, I mean, just, to speak to that, we certainly don't have just a number of participants where the funding from OD and H for our active count could even be, I mean, it would be a drop in the bucket. It really would be. So, and that's, I believe that's a source that we look at in, in the past, but again, like I said, our numbers will never be that, uh, that high to where it would be able to sustain a program.
Tell me again, what did you start with? How much?
Nine hundred and fifty.
Okay, so nine hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, where's that reflected? Uh, I guess better yet, is that, you've got ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars as of April eighth. Is that reflected in there? Where is that nine hundred and fifty thousand?
So it's in the BGA's pot right now. We have to draw down funds as needed. So it's in BGA's pot right now, we have to draw down funds as needed?
Hey, it's in, what's BGA?
It's a federal grant, so the federal government hangs on to it.
I got you.
And then we draw down as we.
And so what happens is we have to incur the expenses first and then get reimbursed? Or are we allowed to go to them and say, we're going to need this much?
That's a process question I have to deal with on Friday.
You incur the expenses and then you.
All right, so you have, we have to slot funding.
Correct.
And it is very specific funding, so it's not general operating money. It is.
They put out a budget that said we're going to use it for DA, for Kyle, a portion of Kyle's position, or user fees, or drug testing. And then they have to say for the theater, the.
It's not in there.
So it's.
What I can do is get you a copy of your interest, and we can get you a copy of the federal grant. So you'll see, because you have to put a budget in what the federal grant is, as Melissa was talking about, and that, it's contained there, but it's not in this.
And so it's not on this page, nothing's reflected on this. I wouldn't like, I mean, I, if we have 950,000 floating around available in this county, I'd probably go buy it.
Well, it's not available. It's earmarked for specific use, so it's not.
I understand that, but it's still, when they submit that check, when they send it by wire, they're still sending it to Oklahoma County though, right?
And so it's actually, this grant is through the district attorney's office, so it's going through.
The Oklahoma County DA's office?
That's ours.
We, we do have the drug court grant also, just so you're aware, we've got a new drug court grant as well, but I think it's going to handle the same way. Part of this through diversion hub, is that right?
Yeah, that one.
We actually have, we actually have a drug court grant as well that's pretty generous over the next four years, but it's, it's going through the diversion hub to help, help offset some of the.
Now, the feds, I feel certain, understanding they move with the speed of heat, that the feds will eventually come in and audit all of this.
They really could, yeah, we wouldn't expect that.
We, we had a monitoring meeting two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, we had, yeah, online site visit, and we had.
With the feds. Okay, good.
So they're, they're, they, they're very specific about what they want to look at and how many times they want to look at it.
That's what, okay, very good.
But if I could comment on Judge Stotter's comment, to the federal grant, expansion of a program is expansion. So even if they're not expanding in numbers, if they're expanding a program in any way for veterans treatment court, if they're expanding, if we want to expand our court, if that means adding new programs, if that means adding new services, that's an expansion in their eyes. So it is a way to continue that funding, continuing it to be sustainable. So it is a continuing revenue, and that is always up for option.
That could draw, it would be a near.
You'd write a check to.
We're still, we're optimistic.
Right, it's not guaranteed, but just because it's like, if he wants to stay at 75 people, grow for the program and continuing to be able to say that we're going to expand in four years could be. So we want to add in marketing, or we want to add another group. Yes, right.
You ready for my motion?
We're on it to new business, I'm just going to wait. Yeah, okay, new business, so it's your time.
I'm going to take it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.